At this time, I'll go ahead and call the July 31st, 2014 Dixon County Commission Meeting to Order. And if, at this time, if you'd please stand and join in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our agenda today, we do have one addition to the agenda, and that is to add, we have some surplus vehicle and also a decommissioned bridge that we will, we can declare a surplus or discuss that by resolution, and that will be added to the agenda. So with that addition, I would move that we approve the agenda.
Second?
We have the motion and the second to approve the agenda with that addition. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, instead of going on to the consent agenda, we'll come back to that. We do have a public hearing to levy specials for the sewer district number three for Detroit, and so we'll go ahead and take that item at this time. Brad, do you just want to make a preliminary remark or so before we open the hearing?
Yes, this is the project that we've been involved in with the residents of Detroit for the last two years or so. And we started out and came up with preliminary estimates of what the cost would be. The project has been funded up to this point on the temporary financing that we secured for them. Since the project is now complete, we know what the expenses are. We need to secure the final financing on this, which will be general bonds. The, our bond council has figured out the amount of the bonds and the annual fee due to the United States government for those is $12,250 for a period of 40 years. That's been divided down amongst the residents, and I gave you, I think, the sheet here a couple, three weeks ago, to a payment, a bond and interest, a payment and a maintenance fee of $49.50 a month or so, which is under the $50 per month that the local residents had targeted initially. So I didn't want to go over that. So we're at the point now where we simply need to do a formal resolution to assess those costs and allow for the improvement cost to be approved and purchased.
Okay. So having heard these comments, at this time, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. And if there's anyone that would want to make comments to be part of the record or have any questions, now would be the time to do so. And I also, just kind of a matter of record, if you do have comment, if you'd please state your name and where you live, and then what your, your comment or question happens to be. So this would be your opportunity, or if any of you on, sort of us on the commission want to make a comment, we could do so at this time.
Well, my comment, anyway, I have a house in Detroit, and I've had it there for many years. But anyway, how can you explain to somebody if you're renting, if you're going to come and pay them too much for sure?
Okay. So the $50 per month, I guess is a little bit of your question, but the, but the purpose of the project, Brad, would you want to touch on that? Just, I mean, it is improvement that needed to be done that we had the request come to us.
Well, I think, looking back, obviously, we have a number of homes in a concentrated area in Detroit, and there's been an issue with a couple of the water testing results that were showing high levels of contaminants due, what they suspected was due to water wells and septic systems, individual septic systems being in close proximity with each other. And for that reason, we were approached by the residents that live in that community to look into the sewer district possibility, which we did, and worked with them. Since that time, a board of directors has been created, as approved, as you're well aware of, of the residents of Detroit. They've been involved in this from the get-go. They identified a target amount that they wanted to stay below as far as the monthly fee of the residents, knowing that if you get it too high, it's just absolutely not, not feasible. And I remember from being in one of their meetings, and I don't remember who it was, but somebody there had just replaced a septic system there in Detroit, and the cost was like $12,000 to completely replace. And looking at that amount and the life expectancy of one, if you were to finance that, I remember the comments were made, and it didn't look like it was such a bad amount to keep it at the $49 number, whereas replacing it coming up for $10,000 or $12,000 right out of their pocket was a pretty substantial hit, too. So those are just some of the discussions, but the people on the board of directors and the residents of Detroit, we've had several public meetings and asked for their imprint, were approving of this project, and we did it on their behalf. This isn't something the county forced on them, this is something we did to help them out, so.
I think sometimes when someone maybe isn't familiar with a community and they're going to buy a property or move into it, too, that sometimes they don't know what all is involved, you know? One, when was the septic tank placed? And, you know, what would be some of the future maintenance issues? So, so this, you know, does cover that. I, I don't know that there's, I really have an answer how you handle that. I mean, that's a, you know, sometimes that's just a, an expense that's built in for someone that's going to rent or buy a house.
Yeah, I might make the comment, too. It's, septic systems do fail in time, and then you end up spending this $12,000 or whatever.
I've got three of them.
And so this, realistically, with this system in place, you know, you don't have to worry about that, but it also should really increase the value of your property because if somebody's buying this and they're saying, "Well, I'm looking at having to replace this septic system." You know, "I don't know about this." Well, you know, the, the water and septic are very important for people to live in a house, so, you know, it-
I'd go along with you, but I still haven't had the idea to tell a renter that you're paying $50 plus a month, $600 bucks a year. Or to do, right? Well, I was really, I was for it, it needed to be done.
In the perfect world, I guess in the perfect world, if, if you had a renter in there and, and they were still on the septic system and it backed up into their house, they would probably be very upset. So, you know, with having this installed, it takes a lot of the worry out of that, that you're not going to be getting a call saying, "Well, I flooded the house and backed up" and all this, but, you know, for their sake, you know, it should, it should mean some value to that renter, that they have a system.
You're not going to get it back there.
Well, we've got, we've got a lot, a lot of security, maybe Brad-
That's not even my point.
Yeah? But it, but it should mean something to the, to that renter to have, to know that they've got a system, a septic system in place that's not going to be a problem for them.
You don't know that.
Well, we've got a lot of safeguards on this system that, like I say, maybe Brad can explain it, but I mean-
No, he didn't.
And this may be something we don't have really an answer to. I, I mean, when you, when you rent, when you rent, whether it's a building or a home, usually utilities are included or they're separated out, and, you know, you tell the renter that, so, so, I mean, that, that's just kind of your decision how to handle that, but it's-
I guess you could-
You could have done that, too.
Yeah.
You could, you could pay the utilities yourself and, and charge $50 a month more for the rent.
Yeah, and you can't even rent it. You can't even give it away. All respect, my gosh.
Well, I appreciate you coming in and, and making your point.
Is there anything feasible that you could go over a longer time?
The 40-year note was the most that the federal government would allow.
Yeah.
They would go less, of course, that would make the payment higher, and that wasn't what the people of Detroit wanted, so 40 years was as long as the, the government would extend it, so.
I'm not trying to be nasty or mean, but I needed some answers. I got a place that I'm fixing up, and I wish I'd burned down.
Well, thank you for coming in.
The, the water contamination could, could have been an issue, too, you know?
Well, I was, I was for it. I had a granddaughter that lived there in the house, and, and the little kid, I was very much for it, but we, they said 45, and then it went up another five bucks. And I've had it for sale for several years, and it still hasn't even had a bite. Of course, it needs support, and that's what I'm doing on now. There's no way that it's going to go down anymore.
It could.
Could.
That's always possible. I mean, if it was refinanced in the future, I don't know what interest rates will do. It could go down, it can't go up, it's locked in.
Yeah.
It will never go up, but if something happened, I can't imagine interest rates going lower than what they are now, but-
That's kind of like we, you know, like, when it got up to $8, they couldn't go any higher. It could, but it didn't work out.
Well, yeah, I, I do know that it's locked in for the 40 years, it can't go any higher.
Okay.
If something happened on the interest where it was feasible, we could refinance it in the future, so.
I'll be more than thrilled.
I doubt they don't know more than what it is now, so it's pretty low right now, so. And if it does, I think we've got a lot of other problems to worry about.
We've got them anyway.
Yeah.
Are there any additional comments or issues that haven't been brought up about this that we need to consider and have part of the public hearing? Hearing none. At this time, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and thank you for stopping in and sharing your concern. We do have it in, just a little bit later on the agenda, where we do also have a public, a, a resolution on the levy specials, and we'll probably get to that in another 15 minutes or so. At this time, I'll go back on the agenda where we have the consent agenda to consider. These are the minutes of the July 24th work session and the regular meeting payroll, $239,326.98. Fund expenditures of $255,953.86. Wire payments of $120,841.84. And then also abatements, $4,996.54.
I mean, we approve the consent agenda?
We have the motion, and I'll give the second to approve the consent agenda as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Do you have a question about the abatements? We can call for discussion.
Oh, okay. Well, I'm sorry, I-
I was waiting for discussion.
Yeah.
Was that a church that, that followed that?
That one.
I'm sorry, Craig.
No, I'm, no, I-
What's the-
That's what it looks like.
We had- I didn't see him till we just got him here.
Seventh-day administ?
I just saw him when, when, yeah. I, I would have asked by murder, but I just didn't see him, Brad.
We know Seventh-day administ was-
That's who it is.
That is exempt.
Yeah.
There's no reason or anything on that side.
But they had sold a bunch of the properties off, that's what's in town.
It looks like, it looks like they had, like, RU property, which is taxable, and then afterwards, they went to an exempt status.
So they got an exemption.
So they got an exemption, and that looks like what happened on both of them.
Okay.
Once, well, it says church parsonage.
Comfortable with that, Craig?
Well, evidently, but I would have thought it would have been tax exempt before, so then it went back to, being on a tax roll?
That all depends on what they're using it for.
Okay.
I know from dealing with the school and the house where an employee lives in it, that didn't make it exempt, but if you use it for some function that has to do with the school, then it becomes exempt, so that might be the situation.
Okay.
Maybe they converted it to use for-
Trific.
Reverse parsonage. Then it might have been rented before, which would make it not tax exempt, if pastor or priest moved into it.
Okay.
I don't know the details of it, but-
Well, and like I said, I should have-
I know that, I know that it's pretty stringent, and you have to make your case pretty detailed to be able to get that exemption, so. Not only our level was bruised, but it has to be approved by PVD as well, so.
Does that satisfy you, or do you want something that we should?
Well, no, I just, you know, I, I, like I said, I, what I want to discuss is, you know, find out exactly what it was. Definitely, I'll, I'll go to aye.
Okay, I hurried through a little too quickly there, so I'm sorry about that, but I, I think we did find out the information you wanted.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Okay, at this time, we'll go ahead to Commissioner comments and committee reports. And Craig, if you'd like to start.
The only thing I attended was the North Central Regional Planning Commission last Thursday. There will be a banquet coming up the 6th of November. All of which will be invited to, but it hasn't gone forward yet. They have a annual banquet, so that'll be coming up. Janelle was appointed to the, I can't think of the exact word, we've moved the pointer to the-
Loan, loan committee?
Yeah, loan committee, yeah, yeah.
That's what it was like.
Really mainly routine business. We did have a little longer, since we didn't meet in June, there's a little more in our budget and stuff, weatherization and stuff, and it's been on there about a year and a half now, and there's still stuff that we're doing that I didn't realize, the bulk plant in Salina, that they've got a loan through is the North Central Regional Planning Commission. That's the only thing I have. Lynn, thank you.
Okay. Well, I didn't attend any meetings this last week, but plan on being in the parade this afternoon here at Ablyn, and looking forward to that.
Very good. And I did not have any meetings that I attended or anything out of the ordinary, and, and like you say, it's, uh, got the parade and, and free fair going on and rodeo this week and weekend, and we have some nice weather for it, so that's, that's, that's kind of good for everyone. Okay. At this time, we'll go on to other public comments, if there would be any. In hearing none, we'll go ahead and go to our report from, from Brad, our county administrator.
Okay, we've been contacted by Koi Construction, they're the ones that we worked a bid to for the concrete work at the county yard around the fuel pumps. They're telling us they'll be here first of the week to get that project underway, so we're eager to get that, get that going, get that completed. Obviously, you mentioned the Central Kansas Free Fair is, is beginning this afternoon. Environmental Services has a booth in Stowe Hall, as they do every year out there, to provide information on their services, on water conservation and values and things of that nature. The I-70 Jeep Road ramps have been reopened, they were opened late last week, and that, all the ramps are completed now on that project. We're told that they got about eight weeks remaining on the westbound lanes to get that done, which is primarily the Detroit exit, 281 exit, old master preparing and rehamming or replacing in that case. So they are operating well within their schedule, things are going very good, so. Our crews are currently replacing, they started yesterday, and I think they actually closed the road this morning. I closed Old Forte East of Chapman for a few days, replacing an old box covert there that is, had failed to deteriorate, replacing it with several tubes. The road will be closed for, probably till Monday or Tuesday when they complete that up and get that back open. We had an inquiry earlier this week from an individual looking to purchase big parts or in whole, an old bridge. That's a new one to me, as I said in my email brief to you, we have people come in periodically wanting to buy things, and of course, we can't just sell them, but this guy, apparently resides around Concordia, had been to Cloud County, and they didn't have anything that suited his needs, and they told him to come down here, and he's looking for an old trust bridge. We just happen to have a couple that had been decommissioned, the roads have been closed, and it's going to require us at some point to go out and remove those. And so he, we gave him a couple of locations, he might have looked, came back, and he said, "I'm going to write you a check." Well, it's not quite that simple, but the one that he liked is on 1700 Avenue, which we've been, have scheduled or been waiting to schedule with our crews to go out and take it down and salvage it and get it out of there, just so there's no longer there. But one of your resolutions today is to declare that surplus, and then we will, our intentions would be to sell it on a sealed bid process, with some conditions on, on the purchaser that they have to remove it in a satisfactory manner and backfill the banks and that, just like we would if we removed it, so.
Is there any water runs in it?
There is a small amount, or yes, in that one.
Is there any permitting that has to be to do?
Not be any permitting to remove it. We already, what we'll do once it's gone is award removal from our list.
Right.
And since it hasn't been used, we haven't been inspecting it, so. We did remove the plaque from it several years ago, but we're going to need a site so people can use it because of, of hazard, and it is one that we are very eager to get out of, just simply because of wouldn't take much for the clabs.
I saw the picture, heard that about a 40.
Uh, it's actually, I believe, 111 feet long.
111 foot? Didn't look that long in the picture.
Yeah.
It's a big bridge.
Yeah.
I mean, he's going to have to have a crane to lift that out.
He does have a crane, yeah.
I mean, it's, he's going to have quite a little expense in getting this moved, so.
At any rate, you know, it's kind of ironic, I sent you that article from the state of Pennsylvania where they're actually advertising the salmon bridge and their old trust bridges, and we thought that was kind of funny last week. This week's not so funny, it's got an interest due for it, but apparently he has a personal use for it there, so.
Well, I think it's, apparently he's a historical type person that just wants to have this on his property.
That's exactly correct, yeah. And so we'll get some money out of it, whatever the, you know, if we get a viable bid, we'll also save some money by not having our guys go out and spend two weeks removing it, so it should be a win-win if we work it out, so. Hopefully, we're good to get out there, we're selling, we may have more than, could have been working on that. So we'll be working, working on that, so. Along the same lines, we've got another cer, another resolution for the, one of the pickups that I told you that were basically what the, one we recently bought in state surplus. And then we've got quite a pile, since we're actually going to be listing that on Purple Wave, Martin's got quite a pile of old bridge planks that he would like to sell, he's got more than, well, if it's feasible use. The last, not the last auction, but the last time we sold some of those, there's quite a demand for those, so we'll move some of those out. We'll still have plenty of them handled to do what we need to do.
Would this guy be interested in some of the planks for this bridge?
May, may very well be. We'll sell it on Purple Wave, so he'll be able to bid on that, so. I'll make sure he's aware of it, so.
Yeah, why don't you?
I'm sure some of it probably came off that bridge, so. I mentioned to you some time ago, of course, you've seen the letters on KDOT's new local bridge funding program. We've identified two bridges that we believe would be viable candidates for that, the one being up on 3600 Avenue and the other one being on Moon Road. We've been working with BG Consultants, and they've put together the application. We do have a meeting on the 28th of August in Salina with KDOT. They're meeting with all the counties to discuss that process, and if nothing new comes up, that we don't learn anything other than what we know now, we intend to submit those applications by the 15th of September. We're very confident we should get one, minimum one, potentially, the way we're doing it, two bridges funded out of that project, so. We also have the other, the other grant application that we discussed with you, which is, the acronym was FLAT, Federal Land Access Program. That's a federally funded program that, it doesn't go through KDOT like we traditionally deal with grants, even though they're federal, but it just comes directly from the federal government, and it provides assistance to local agencies who have roads that access federal lands. In this case, we have core of engineered property up around Milford Bank and the Curtis Creek area that would make us eligible for that funding. And by the sheet that I provided, I think you had it before, but we would like to apply for project number one of five of those that our county engineers identified, which would be a two-inch overlay on four miles of rain road from K-18 up to Upland, up 3400 Avenue. Our estimated cost of that, total cost of project would be $645,000, of which 80% will be funded by the federal government if, if we are awarded that. Our, our challenge will be, if we are awarded that grant, is to come up with 20% matching funds. The letter that you, we would ask you to sign today does not commit us by any means to the project. If we get the award, it just allows us to make the application, and then if they contact us back, if it looks like we don't have the 20% that we can put up for matching funds, we would go ahead and proceed with it. If we don't apply for it, today's the deadline, if we don't apply for it, obviously we won't get it. In talking to John Goff and Martin, my, my theory was we would apply for it, get our hat and a ring, if we are fortunate enough to receive some of that or get an award, depending on what happens. Right now, we don't have it in the budget for next year, but depending on what happens with the sales tax issue, if that goes through, we do have no additional funding, we can use some of that for matching funds, and it would be, be a real good return on our, on our dollars for that investment at 20%, so.
Everything is, this is $645,000, you know, the design?
Yeah, this does pay for design and engineering, and that's, that's different, as you know, for a lot of KDOT projects, so.
Yeah, okay.
It's strictly a flat 80/20, so.
So in other words, our cost would be about $130,000?
Yes, that's true. And, and just to clarify, on our typical grant programs, we have to pay the construction, design, and engineering upfront, and it's not part of the, the thing that they give us.
In other words, if we were going 90, we'd still be paying, be paying probably more than if we were going 90.
So even though it's 80/20 match on those type of programs, we'll pay more than 20% by the time you had to design and engineering and then inspection, so. This one, it's a true 80/20, everything's inclusive, so. And let's see, we, we talked about the fact sheets that you've got, and we'll get that updated.
Quick question, again, back on the FLAT program.
Uh-huh.
It will be awarded this, I mean, it, we will have the money this year then, I mean, it's-
No, no, it'll be, I'm sure-
I mean, well, next year, I'm, I'm sorry, yeah. It will be next year, a little bit.
As far as we know, unless something happens in Washington or the Capitol.
Yeah, and sequester comes in Nevada.
Yeah, that's any day, you know, that's a moving target.
Yeah.
This is the funding that's traditionally been available, there's only been one other county in Kansas that's utilized it, darn it, always that was Douglas County, for a similar purpose to the reservoir down there, and they, they overlaid some roads, and John has been down, talked with their engineer, got the paperwork and documents on what they did, and we also, in our application, we have a support letter from the manager, the core engineers up at Milford, and so we think we've got everything in line and ready to get you guys to sign that support letter and send it off, so. And that's all I've got, unless you have any questions. Oh, we've also got the staff report, and I gave it this morning, so. We've had, you know, this end of month of July, we had three employees leave and hired one, so other than that, it's been pretty much the same.
Can we go back to the bridge that we want to sell?
Mm-hmm.
We're not going to get a lot of bidders on this, probably his best.
I would anticipate we'll probably get one, so.
Do we have any recourse if he bids really low and?
We can accept and deny any bids, yeah. What, what- What, what I would anticipate, if he was asking me what I thought it was worth, I would, Doug and I talked about this a little bit. I think we should set probably a reserve, at least what we estimate the bridge weighs and the current value of steel, you know, prepared steel. And so he has, you know, we're, we're not going to give it away by any means. If he comes in at twenty dollars or, you know, that's not, that, to me, is not viable, but we don't know what the bridge weighs. He was supposed to do some research. He had a, he used to work for Bridges Inc., so he had a.
What do you know, yeah, yeah. You and I being what it weighs per foot, width and depth.
And right now, steel's running a little over a hundred-and-fifty dollars a ton, so.
I think that bridge is going to weigh quite a bit.
Yeah, it does.
A hundred-and-fifty dollar a ton is going to be a sizable amount. And I doubt if he's going to be wanting to pay for that, because he's going to have to remove it himself. But like I say, so, so I guess what I'm saying is, I don't think we should really expect a hundred-and-fifty dollar a ton out of it, but it's some figure lower than that.
Well, we.
If we had to tear it down, I mean, we'd have some costs in it.
We would, yeah.
Doug, can, can it be awarded where we do have the right to review what the bid is?
Yes, certainly.
And at that time, either accepted or rejected based on?
Look, you have the options, just like Brad said. If this is going to be a project, the county's going to tear it down, have expense in doing so, but then would get some money back by the salvaging of the steel. The other option is if this individual, or whoever the successful bidder is, tears it out, has the liability insurance to go with it, restores the, the area, however the county requires. And then you have determined, predetermined what's a fair price to do all of that, then you would be able to accept or to reject. You have your option.
I think that cover your concern.
Yeah. Well, I just, I just didn't want him to come in with a real little bid and then we'd have to accept it.
Well, that's his choice. What he, he knows that, what, what he thinks it's worth. And I'm sure he has an idea of what it's going to cost him to tear it apart and to choose it however he intends to.
And that's the cost that we'd have if we had to tear it down ourselves. You know, I mean, I'm sure Mark could come up with some ballpark figures, you know, we kind of, you know, just to make it, make it easy.
Cause I know yesterday, when we talked, Mark and I talked, it would fairly take about two weeks for us to do it with the crew.
Yeah, yeah, and you'd have to crane out there.
Well, I'm not sure, I'm not sure our crane would do it.
Well, you break it apart.
Maybe it would go down in one piece. There's one pin on there that could be knocked out and the whole thing.
And you're not, they're not going to take it out in one piece anyway.
Yeah, and then you get down and cut it up into pieces and pull the pieces out.
It'd be quicker for us to tear it apart, cut it up, than it would for him.
Yeah, because we're not going to salvage it, so.
Yeah.
Or we're not going to, it's a way to work to be put back together.
And we'd be figuring out how we're going to do it rather than how he's going to do it, because that's been the fact of where we get for it.
I mean, you're just saying we did it for it, or did not?
Oh, yeah, well, yeah, yeah, and that's, we might have somebody come in and want to bid.
Yeah. The concrete. I suppose it's concrete, but what's on the ends, do those stay or does he have to remove them?
I don't know what is concrete on that one.
The one down there, most of them are just bridge planks.
I think it's just steel frame that goes out with the plank on those.
What is that on?
Cause it sits on the pilings and, so.
Oh.
Yeah, I don't think there's concrete, but what's on those, so. But any holes or anything like that, we'll ask them to fill back in, you know. So you guys have had the foundation, so we'll accept it.
Yeah, well, yeah, that, that's all I was concerned about.
Okay. Doug, do you have anything in addition for us?
No, no, nothing other than what I shared with you last time about the hearing coming up on August twenty-second for the, the, that would lead to a tax sale. That will be the final hearing in front of the court for those who have either filed answer or, or on default. And so I'll take those journal entries, work them on through, and then from that date, we'll be able to establish a tax sale date. The good part is the numbers have been reduced, so as many people as I anticipate are going to redeem, probably have redeemed. So I'll have the final number for you after the twenty-second, that day parcel to those states is going to be sold. That's all I have, thank you.
Very good, thank you. This time, we'll go to our communications and we just have a few things that we've received in the mail. And one of them is an outlook conference in, at Dallas. And this has to do with commercial vehicles. So this will be for a review. And of course, we get invitations to quite a few of these things and typically, I don't think we've attended them. There might come a day, sometimes some conference will come up that we will want to attend, so it's, it's good to be aware of those. The other thing is, I haven't noticed, this is from the state of Kansas, they're going to conduct a public hearing on housing needs and issues for citizens. And they want to have input into the development of the 2015 Kansas Consolidated Plan. And this talks about some of the resources that are going to be available for the CDVG, which is your Community Development Block Grant, and Home Investment Partnerships and Emergency Solution Grants. And this hearing is going to take place at Topeka Wednesday, August sixth. And so I'll go ahead and give it to you, Brad, so if there's any individuals that you would think department heads or, or any of us as commissioners that would want to attend that, that's available. Did any of you receive any other notices or communications by email or just comments in the community that you'd want to share?
I have been receiving it through having our computer.
If we go out to the fairgrounds this week, I'm sure we'll be out there, maybe we'll hear a few things.
Well, I was there yesterday and heard some things.
You what?
I was there yesterday and heard some things.
Oh, okay.
Did have a nice conversation with Tim Strong.
Oh, and you know, he mentioned to me about the door that the, would put in out of Stro Hall. And you know, it really does, it's just a nice addition, but it's just very, you know, keeps it consistent with the doors on the north end and, and, and really more functional. Replaced a solid door. And there's a lot of people doing a lot of work out there. Okay, at this time, we're going to go to resolutions. The first resolution we had on the agenda, you know, is, will be for the levy specials on the sewer district number three Detroit. Is there any comments or questions anyone would have? We've had our public hearing on that. Brad, do you have any comment? And I think we've kind of covered it, but.
Do you mind stating what the resolution says?
Okay. Just, they have a summation here that, but just to cover the main part of it, this is a resolution for levying and assessing special assessments on certain lots, tracts and parcels around liable for such special assessments to pay for the cost of the sanitary sewer improvements in the main sanitary sewer district number three, Dickenson County, Kansas, as authorized by the county resolution number zero-six, three-zero-one-one, and resolution number zero-five, one-zero-one-two.
So move, approve the resolution?
Okay.
I'll say that.
Okay. And the resolution we're adopting today, those resolutions I mentioned were referring to when it came up previous. So this has been going on since 2011, as far as formal resolution. Today's resolution is zero-seven, three-one-one-four. So we have the motion and the second to adopt that resolution. Any further discussion? All in favor of that resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The, and we'll need to go ahead and sign this, so I'll pass this down. I'll sign it when it comes back my way. Okay, there's two copies here. We did have the addition to the agenda for surplus. And since it involves two separate items, the vehicle, but also the bridge, they're going to be separate resolutions. And so the first resolution we have. Just looking for the one here. This one's for the.
It'd be down in the middle.
This is for the.
Okay, this is for the pickup truck. Okay, the first resolution is zero-seven, three-one-one-four A. And this is to declare surplus, the Ford F-150 pickup truck. And then also, we have these used bridge planks. And I'll go ahead and move that we adopt resolution zero-seven, three-one-one-four A. We have the motion, we have the second to adopt that resolution. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And we do have one more resolution on surplus. And this is for the, the trust bridge. And that was the one that we had discussed, that we would have the right to review any bid that we had on it once we get to that part. But to declare it surplus is what we need to do first. And this resolution is zero-seven, three-one-one-four B.
I'm moving to approve that resolution.
Second.
Okay, we have the motion and the second to approve that resolution on the trust bridge to declare a surplus. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The, okay. Is this this?
That's the under other business.
Okay, yes. We do have one other item under other business, and this is on the, the FLAP funding for roads. And any discussion or questions on this? This is a letter in support of Dixon County making application for the FLAP funding.
We're, at this time, just making the application for that one road. We're not doing.
That's correct. We're just making application, it's not a commitment to.
In later years, we'd, we'd have to make another application if we wanted to do more roads.
Yeah.
So move.
Okay, we have the motion.
I'll say that.
And we have the second, that we do send in a letter in support of Dixon County making application for the FLAP funding. This is up at Rain Road Improvement Access to Curtis Creek Recreation Area at Milford Lake.
Yeah, it's the four miles.
Any further discussion or comments? All in favor of that motion, the second, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I don't believe we have anything else other than adjournment.
So move.
I'll say that.
We have the motion and the second for adjournment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, we're adjourned.